... Let's start with prayer and good beliefs. Are you ready? Maybe I'll turn that down. I'll just... One second. Our recorder on. Okay, all right. Dear Lord, we thank you for bringing us together today to take care of county business. Proceed on into budget discussions for this upcoming year. We ask that you would guide our conversations and our decisions, that they would be best for our taxpayers, our residents. We thank you for those that are here participating today. We pray for our first responders, our servicemen and women. Thank you for the wonderful celebration of July 4th. We celebrated our freedom. We are grateful to live in this county and thank you for how you blessed us. We ask for your continued blessing upon each and every citizen in this county. Thank you for employees in this county. Lord, again, we just yield to you for direction each day. And turn this meeting over to you, Christ-ignoring man. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to our first official or meeting of the month of July 2019. Today is the eighth. It's 9:00 a.m. and we'll begin with our first regular meeting of the month. Item number one is our time for public comments. Is there anyone that would like to make any public comment about a non-agenda item at this time? All right, we will move on to considering and approving the June 24 minutes, our last meeting of the month of June. The motion is made to approve those minutes by Commissioner Parker and seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All favors say aye. Opposed, there are none. Ken Wilson has got something going on there for a few minutes in court with Judge Saucier. He's going to come and join us as soon as he can, and I will jump back to item number three. So until then, let's move on into item number four. This is our time where commissioners can share with us what is going on in the way of roadwork in their precinct. Commissioner Riddle, precinct one.
We have a week or less. We get trees for almost all the week to get out of the ditches and roads. Then last week, we spent our time getting prepared to rehab some roads in the, down on the west side of Lake Tankers. A little short streets, not very many miles, but a lot of, a lot of little roads that need some attention. That's about it.
Precinct two, Commissioner Fitch.
We've been working on 2,500. It has some pretty bad base failures, gotten really soft where that road, about a mile of that road was built over some of the coal mine where they had dug, and then they rebuilt the road. It's kind of soft in places. We're fixing that. Did a lot of pothole fixing, trying to catch up on that, and started doing some mowing. And we mowed 2,300, 23, 25, 2,400, about 2,500, all around in those areas. And we'll be heading over towards the Monticello area and working our way back across north to west New Hope. And we had a lot of trees. One day, I had a tree on 1070. And 2,600, there was a tree down. And so we've been also working some soft spots on 2710, getting it ready for seal coating. And this week, we plan by the end of the week to start getting some prep done on 2720, doing some overlaying, some cold mix on it in a few places that kind of wore out. And that's about it.
Precinct three, Commissioner Applewhite. That eight, kind of 1820 and 1910, we got this spot in 1910, could have killed it, maintained 1820. Should be through this week. Got to start mowing up the Liberty Field there and there. Got a bunch of trees. Little scabbing here and there. Then a bit of this, a wicked. Precinct four.
Oh, we have got the, we've got our precinct actually broken up into three different sections. We call it a middle section, which is 49 to 67, and then our north section is, we've got North Cooppel, and then south section is 49 to Iowa 11. We've got the center section and most of the north section mowed. They're working on it, trying to finish up the rest of that area today. And the guys are all out to our yard, we're fixing to start doing some scavenging and fixing some soft spots in 3155 and 4325, uh, 4315, and possibly then some other soft spots on 4325. And finally got our side cutter back going, and he's been running in last week. We've just kind of been moving around. We've had some phone calls, we've kind of been moving around a bit, and I think he's gotten both of those calls done, and he's going to start in an area, just try to lift that area up and go. So hopefully we've got, got that all done, ready, and hopefully we'll be ready to get everybody back together and start doing some, some preparation.
You both used that term scabbing. Tell me why that comes up, it's a little scabby.
If we, if we put in a code, we've got an area there that we've just got iron ore on, and we let it set, and the set is good, and then we go in there and scrape the top of it off, and then scab back over with cold mix or oil sand, whatever. And if you've got an area that you reworked, and that's all the area that you need to do before you seal coat, you can go in there and scab over it, or possibly in hot mix, or on cold mix, it's really possible.
The side cutter you referred to, that, that, that side lay by the trees, is not a question? All right, thank you very much. Let's move on to item number five. Item number five, discuss and possibly approve the purchase of an external defibrillator for Argo Fire Department. We had originally approved purchases of these for houses, and then we approved three for three of the volunteer fire departments. That would have been Calco, Cooppel, and what's that? Calco Sugar Hill, Tri-Lakes. So our Calco Sugar Hill and Tri-Lakes. So those purchases have been made. We had training on how to use these for courthouse personnel back about six weeks ago. And so Jane, I think, has requested to put this on here to consider. Is this yours? Yes. So... Yeah, let's see. The price for buying a single individual unit is going to be a little bit higher than what we had paid on purchasing the three. $1,404 gets us a new Z O L L brand, Z O L A E D, plus the case, pads, battery set, and a case to hold everything there. $1,404. Paul, what'd we pay for when we bought them three at a time? Less, a little less than that, or?
About $1,400.
Okay. Okay, so this one will be $1,404. And any comments you want to make on the necessity for equipment? Are you good with that?
Well, like I said, we, that's for, the Argo, that's got set up. Since then, we've got to set up everything. Volunteer fire department, we're just doing pretty good. Back in the day, that, that's good happenstance.
So that's for your consideration. What is your decision?
Make a motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Applewhite to purchase an external defibrillator for the Argo volunteer fire department. That'll give us four of our fire departments with the defibrillator.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch, all in favor of this $1,404 purchase. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's go back now that Ken Wilson is here. Ken, if you'll come up and give us some information here on item number three, we're going to consider and possibly approve recommendations from the Court Security Committee. So if you give us a little bit of brief background for those that may be listening on the YouTube channel, what the court security is, why it exists, and who's on that committee, and what are their mandates.
Good morning. Thank you, Judge. Basically, the Texas Senate come out, come down with Texas Senate Bill 42, and it took effect September 15th of 2017. There's several people that are on the security committee, including Judge Brian Lee, Paul Lindsey, Dana Applewhite, Al Riddle, Nanette Willoughby, Lieutenant Price as a designate from the sheriff's office, Chuck Bailey, Irma Dunn, Steve Agan, Joan Newman, Ray Barrett, Chris Durant, myself, Judge Ross, and Judge Saucier. And basically, Senate Bill 42 mandates us to establish a local court security committee to give the Commissioners' Court recommendations for all of the courtrooms in the county. It also institutes training for bailiffs and court security, and it authorizes the courts to charge a $5 fee. This is something that was mandated, and that we just had to get done and have to turn in to the Commissioners' Court. So what we did is, we met a couple times during the committee process, and the, everyone on the committee agreed that we needed to go through all of these recommendations for you. And I can go through every recommendation, but basically it's policies and procedures of how we handle people coming into the courtroom, procedures for inmates coming in. The only, it also goes through entry and exit procedures for employees, non-employees, court personnel. And then it goes through requests for escorts and parking, package delivery, response to courthouse, courtroom disorder and critical incidents. And then, of course, it goes through inmate escorts, courtroom conduct, and it establishes just a general rules and procedures for the court. The only thing that, the only long-term goal that we have here, and that was the committee's recommendation, is to hold court in one central location. Instead of having the county court over here, we wanted to, everybody in the committee thought that it was a good idea to have one central location to have court in, excluding Commissioners' Court. And the reason behind that is having to staff multiple metal, or multiple people at the metal detectors. Right now, we do have a staffing issue, and, you know, it's, it's hard to get somebody. And so, you know, having one access point for the county court and all the district courts, and Attorney General Court, and CPS Court that we hold monthly, to me, makes sense. And what we're here to do today is to give you the recommendations. You can act on the recommendations, you can approve the recommendations, or you can, you know, just take it under advisement. But we're required to submit this to you. So that's, that's where we're at. And if anybody has any questions about any of it, I'd be more than happy to go into detail on it.
Other than having the courts all in one location, is there anything on here that we're not currently trying to see on a regular basis, or anything that we don't have the money to do right now, or that, in other words, is there any major changes here that were recommended that we need to implement that we have not already implemented?
The only thing I've run into lately is we're not handcuffing pregnant females. And I think that there may be a new law out. I don't know how applicable that is to us. I may let the sheriff speak on that. But we had someone the other day that brought somebody over, they didn't have a pregnant female handcuffed. To me, you know, there's, there's another section that just come out. I think it goes into effect September 2019. And I'm not sure it's applicable to bringing inmates over with, without handcuffs on. So, yeah, I don't know. If we have a female run from the courthouse and we have to tackle them, we may be in trouble. That's the only issue that we're having right now is with pregnant females. The only other issue, or only other need that I see that we need is, not too long ago, I know Paul Lindsey replaced some of the metal detectors, and I told him that ours was fine, that we didn't need to replace ours. Well, I don't know if he jinxed me or what, but we're having some trouble with the metal detector over there now. And it's given us, it's still working, but it's given us, when nobody's walking through, it's given us false alarms. And so it's setting itself off, and we've, we've tried to look at it, but that's, that's the only need that we have right now is one metal detector is what we need. And, you know, as long as, I know we've talked about another courtroom over there. I think that would help a lot, not only freeing up so that we could have two courts going at the same time, we could have county court over there and wouldn't have to man this as well. So anyways, that, that in a nutshell is, is where we're at.
Will you tell the judges and DA and Mark on your calendar, if all goes well at our next meeting on the 22nd, we will have a report from Lynn Cowherd who did the study on the annex and the discussion of feasibility of a remodel of that building?
Okay, yes, sir.
In two weeks. I'd like everybody to kind of hear, you know, what we're dealing with there, pros and cons.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you.
Will, will either of the judges be there tomorrow for their slot on the budget discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. Be sure that they, I've made a note on here that they bring that metal detector up. Time to discuss that. Okay, thank you very much. This will be included in the minutes, so that if anybody's interested in reading the details of this, we'll talk about ten-page report, Titus County Security Plan Recommendation, that will be included as part of the minutes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, item number six, consider and possibly approve purchase of a... Oh, that's right. We do need to take some action on here. Let's go back. We didn't just get a presentation. We need to approve this plan, this recommendation in the form of a security plan on item number three. Make a motion when we approve the plan. Motion is made by Commissioner Fitch to approve the Titus County Security Plan and Recommendations.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Item number six, Sheriff, you'll have a little bit of interest in this. Consider and possibly approve the purchase of a license and associated programming costs for land, tenant, communications to enable the sheriff's office phone system to be linked to the courthouse and the annex, and a cost of about $1,800. Try to keep this simple, but one of the things that we gained by replacing that phone system of yours was that in conjunction with recently expanded fiber optics that connects now the courthouse to the annex, to the sheriff's office, and even to the JP office. We have the infrastructure in place where we can all be on the same phone system communication capability. And essentially, that means we can dial a four-digit number to reach any specific extension in these locations. But right now, I'm not talking about the JP offices, I'm only talking about the sheriff's office. Because of the age and the, and the model number of that particular system that we have, in order to link the sheriff's office back to our main phone system, there's about, about a $700 license fee that's required in order to do that. And then there's another roughly $1,080 in programming costs, which will be the high then. That's a whole day's worth of programming. Land tenant, I'm not sure if that's going to be needed, but we went ahead and quoted it high, case, took the entire day. So we can see some benefit in linking the sheriff's office where any and all individual telephone extension numbers can call other extension numbers at the sheriff's office and vice versa. This is what we need to do to fully utilize the capabilities of that phone system, along with the one-time programming cost, the one-time licensing. At the next meeting, when I have a little bit more caution about the numbers, I will talk about the same thing. Now, $1,800 for the sheriff's office, we can see the benefits. Again, just as a review, right now, the courthouse and the annex have the ability to call station to station, but we have never included that capability with the sheriff's office or the JP's office. So I have a motion to... Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye. Item number seven, approve oral written reports.
We're putting a little bit of money in there. Right now, it's got, we're buying all that equipment. I don't think we'll be buying it, but the future, as you already have it on, but we are going to have to pay for the fuel and things and all, piece of equipment, so we're not finding a budget off of it anymore.
That was my question you answered. That'll be, that's not going to be replenished by the individual road bridge, not that it replenished. So that's, that's... That's not... That's not... Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. It's going to come out of jail.
Motion made to approve oral written reports by Commissioner Applewhite. Second, second Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye. Aye. I make a decision. Okay. All right. Motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. I make a decision. Okay. All right. Number nine, approve budget minutes. Done. Thank you. Item number 10, signed pay orders and approved amendments. Motion is made by Commissioner Parker, and seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye. All right, we're running quite quicker than I thought we would. We've got our first budget meeting set up, with our first individual change, and not until 10:00. We got... Second, and second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye. All right. We're running quite quicker than I thought we would. We've got our first budget, um, meeting set up. Our first individual shame, man, not from ten o'clock, maybe I just, jaw out, and you feel away from ten, or you want to try to get somebody over here, or you don't think anything to do, phone calls make, and then for five minutes. Okay. We'll see if we can get the things sped up here. Closing comments by judges and commissioners, if any. Like I said, we're here with Lynn Calvert, according to the annex project, here is comments. We've got the, the construction work on all four entrances. So that being closed, we've got it locked up, signage on there, a couple of, a lot of it protected, got fencing out there to protect the construction area tomorrow, but they, today, there's, 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 I thought they were going to be starting that tomorrow, because of Debbie Sawing and Jack Henry going on, and they were moving steps and landing out there. After that is done, it's completed tomorrow, Wednesday, they measure, uh, for the custom cut steel that will be placed in there to support, uh, new concrete there on the landing. So we'll have the, probably a two to three week period where nothing will be going on, just probably for that steel, waiting on that steel to come in. Once the steel's in, that'll affect well, steel, superstructure, and for the, uh, concrete, hopefully all of that will be done by late July, then likely late, all the way through August until Labor Day. Plan now is on Labor Day holiday to put the coating after that concrete is here for a month. They'll apply that coating to all four entrances, so that it's done all at one time, create a quick entry, give it enough time to dry. That way, we have to do two entrances, and then come back and do two at a later date. We'll still be able to come and go through the elevator, uh, during that time, if there was any snag, that we had to be here, and later, maybe by, uh, and that we'd be able to apply it to the elevator. So hopefully after, like, I think, uh, there, and that, where the coating, uh, all four entrances, we have, on, on, yeah, oh, yeah.
Uh, last Tuesday, we got a new chipper in. I had that now, real nice, and get some training on it, and we've got a lot of new up and up rates on it, and we're working on it. Uh, we've got in a couple sheds, make some.
I didn't get that out.